Secretary, call the roll.
Schubert.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
SepFuentes.
Here.
Arroyo. Olivas.
Here.
LaShay.
Here.
Do we have public comments? Oh, okay. So, what are your comments? This is the regular board meeting. Okay, so we don't have any for the public?
Yeah, we do.
Really? Okay. Okay, I think we're on the wrong... The people who had signed up, they're not signing up for the public hearing, are they? Yeah, I'll have to sign the wrong, wrong board. Yeah. You don't want to talk on the public hearing, you want to talk on the regular?
Regular.
Okay, regular. Okay, all right. Just for clarification. Okay, so the, so the public hearing has no comments. So, discussion on the driver's education. Dr. Norrell.
I'm going to, yes, Dr. Engel is, Amy Engel is going to share. The state requires a hearing as we're seeking a waiver as stated in school code. The school code states that in order for the school district to receive reimbursement from the state, the driver's education course offered in schools should consist of at least 30 hours of classroom instruction and, subject to modifications, at least six hours of practice driving in a car having dual operation controls under direct individual instruction. The waiver proposal would allow the simulator portion of three hours of driving time to be applied toward the required total number of on-the-road driving time of six hours. The waiver would remain effective once approved through the 28, 29 school year or five years.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All right. So we can adjourn that portion of the meeting. So Secretary, call the roll.
Schubert.
Yes.
SepFuentes. Gillespie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
LaShay.
Yes.
Olivas.
Yes.
Arroyo.
All righty. Okay, so now we will begin our regular Board of Education meeting. So Secretary, call the roll.
Arroyo.
Here.
LaShay.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Schubert.
Here.
SepFuentes.
Here.
Olivas.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, equal to all, for the great sake of God.
All righty. So there's... All righty, so you would have had to have signed up before seven o'clock to speak. We ask that you respect the three-minute time limit and we ask that you respect the confidentiality of our students and staff. Celia Valdez.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Celia Valdez. I live on the 600 block of East Benton Street. I wear a lot of different hats. I am a district parent. I'm a district resident. I'm a district alumni, hence the 2004 shirt. It's our 20th year this year. I'm also a former district staff member. And all of that comes into play into this issue that I have now with communication. Now, we can all agree, communication is a big thing. It takes a lot of skill, a lot of practice, hence my speech class that I'm probably making my former professor cringe right now. So, having said that, I really want to kind of bring up something that is our motto. Once a Tomcat, always a Tomcat. And I really want you guys to think about what that means. Some of us didn't graduate from here, some of us weren't students or products of the district, but as a member of the community that is East Aurora, you guys are Tomcats. And I can tell you that for me, once a Tomcat, always a Tomcat, is very significant because I'm a second-generation Tomcat. My son and my daughter and my stepson are also now third-generation Tomcats. So, I don't know if you guys know what legacy families are. I know it doesn't mean it have any bearing in the public sector or public education, but that means a lot to my family. Seven of us graduated from this district. We are second-generation. Our first-generation citizens, our parents immigrated, so it means a lot to me specifically. And having said that, we are now planning our 20-year reunion and I can tell you I'm really disappointed with the communication that we've had. Back in March or April, I can pull up the emails, I started communicating with high school admin about planning our reunion and planning a tour, and we also didn't want to take without giving back. We wanted to coordinate a community event where we could help our families and also raise funds for graduating seniors who didn't have the money for caps and gowns. That fell through because of lack of communication or ineffective communication. Today is the 7th. Our reunion is next Saturday, the 19th. And I just got word today that the day that we wanted for our tour will work out. We may or may not have an escort. We'll see what happens when we cross that bridge. Having been a veteran, we need to know, I learned that I need to know if that bridge is going to be there when I get to it. And I'm also very protective of my name. And my name is attached to everything with this reunion. And I really don't appreciate that "once a Tomcat, always a Tomcat" isn't really effective and hasn't gotten me much of anything when it came to this. And I don't like to complain without having a suggestion in place. I don't want to present a problem and not offer my perspective as a solution. But how about we get the Alumni Association that still exists rolling with the district and actually give meaning and weight to "once a Tomcat, always a Tomcat."
Okay, thank you. Becky Ryro.
Good evening. I'm Becky Ryro, Union President. I'm here tonight to introduce Oak Park Elementary. Oak Park has 45 fabulous staff members with approximately 350 years of combined years of service to this district. They are at about 95, 96% Union membership. Go Oak Park! When I asked them to describe their school, staff consistently use the same words. They use words like supportive, encouraging, comfortable, and friendly. And that has certainly been my experience. They've always been able to lend a hand and support to anything that I've asked them to do. Oak Park is also home to two fabulous veteran reps, Vicky Hyer, who's here tonight, and Kristy Pokranowski. And it is home to administrators Maricela Garcia and this year's Kane County Administrator of the Year, Annette McMahon. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to introduce Oak Park to all of you, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that concludes our public comments. So, on to election of the Vice President. So, since we don't do this that often, I hope I don't botch it. Okay. So I would like to entertain nominations for the Office of Vice President.
I nominate Mr. Arroyo.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I would like to self-nominate myself, so I will, Olivas.
Okay. All righty. So, any others? Okay. So nominations at this time are closed. So Secretary, call the roll for the nomination of Vice President Alex Arroyo. For Alex Arroyo.
Schubert.
Yes.
SepFuentes.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Gillespie.
Yes.
Olivas?
No.
Arroyo?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
All righty. So, all righty, so congratulations, Mr. Arroyo. All righty. On to committee member assignments. So with committee members, let's see, when Mr. Barrero left, he was on the Curriculum Committee. So I will be putting Ms. Gillespie onto the Curriculum Committee. Everything will then remain the same with that committee. On the Finance Committee, Mr. Schubert has agreed to join us. So, and the Chair will be myself. So, so that closes the committee portion. So now we are on to Communications for the Superintendent, Dr. Norrell.
Good evening, Board of Education and community members. We are going to start my report with our Public Relations Office. We have two very special celebrations this evening and I believe we're going to start with, oh, and Principal Mitchell's going to come up. We're going to start with our National Merit Recognition, which is huge. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Yelenowski.
Thank you, thank you so much. As you know, our school district always has a lot to celebrate. Our board, our leadership, teachers, staff, and students work hard and are committed to everyone reaching their full potential. And one of our students reaching their full potential is East Aurora High School Senior Michael Alcalde. He was recently recognized and named a commended student in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program for the exceptional academic promise demonstrated by his outstanding performance on the preliminary SAT National Merits Scholarship Qualifying Test based on a National Selection Index score of 208. Congratulations, Michael, on your outstanding performance. And his family came out to join us and I can tell they're really, really proud. So congrats, family, too. And then we have a second recognition. We couldn't be prouder, any prouder of our Navy Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, the NJROTC. And we would like to recognize them today for being honored with a 2024-25 Distinguished Unit with Honors Designation, which is awarded annually to schools whose NJROTC program ranked in the top 20% in the nation. Competing units are ranked according to the degree of excellence attained in administration, academic performance, military proficiency, and school support. In addition, the Department of the Navy also recognized our East Aurora High School NJROTC as a Naval Honor School. Congratulations. And we're going to be calling them up. Let's clap, let's go! This is a big deal. So, right now, we're going to call up some members of the Tomcat Regiment Leadership. A couple couldn't make it, but I still want to mention their names because it's quite an honor. Captain Cadet Leslie Zamora, she's also commanding officer. Captain, oh, Cadet Captain and Executive Officer Karina Perez Zuniga, she's here. And if you could just stay up here, too, because we'll took a group picture, okay? Cadet Master Chief Petty Officer and Commander Master Chief, she's got quite a title, Raquel M. Martinez. And now we'd like to recognize members of the Naval Science Instructor Staff. So first, Chief Petty Officer Albert Farmer. I don't think he's here today, but we'd like to welcome him. Chief Petty Officer Gerald Good. Chief Petty Officer Jose Otero Rivera. Petty Officer First Class William Moore.
They don't want to come, okay.
And if you could stay up here with us for a picture. And last but not least, Commander Michael Curley. Oh, and yes, and Dr. Norrell has something else to share.
Sorry. As a part of this recognition, this is huge, and I just want to say kudos for the work that all of you do. And I also want to continue to brag because I read the official letter that was sent on behalf of the unit. And one of the things, just to show how serious this national distinction is, is that your unit, and I think the letter went to Principal Mitchell, has been recognized and given the capacity to recommend students that are eligible, eligible cadets, to the U.S. Naval Academy, also the Military Academy, U.S. Military Academy, and the U.S. Air Force Academy. So they are giving you the capacity to recommend cadets who would be eligible, which is tremendous because that would bypass them. So that is just a huge honor and that in and of itself is a great distinction. So again, kudos.
If we could get a picture of you guys with the board, too, that'd be great. Over that way, I admit.
Yay, oh, you got it.
I'll move out of the way.
Yay! Nice, you got it. You got it? Okay.
All right, I think I need a little more pull to that ear.
Oh, great, okay.
Up with it a little, you got it?
All right, can everybody see the camera?
Yeah.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you!
Congratulations.
Okay.
Let me keep going. Okay. Under District Updates, it is that time of year again and we, you as a Board of Education, need to prepare for the IIII Conference, which is IASBO, IASA, and of course, IASB. And for the annual conference, again this year, there will be an IASB Delegate Assembly where all 852 school districts in the state of Illinois will discuss very, very important legislation and formally vote to make recommendations on resolutions that they move forward to the legislators. And so again, this year, we will need to identify as a school board who the IASB Delegate Rep will be. And so tonight, if we can identify via consensus, the rep for this year's conference for the Delegate Assembly, you will have until the next board meeting, or even November 4th, to take a look at all of the 10 resolutions that were included in your packet, six of which are being recommended for adoption by the committee, Resolutions Committee from the IASB, and another four that are being recommended to not adopt. So whether or not you as board members individually would like your rep that we're selecting tonight to follow through with the recommendation from the committee, you will have until, again, we could wait until the November 4th board meeting, to be able to give your wishes as a board, unite it to your rep. So the first thing I think that we need to do tonight is to go ahead and determine a rep for the Delegate Assembly.
Okay. Any volunteers? So, would you like to volunteer?
I think you've been nominated.
I'll volunteer.
Okay.
Yay, all right, all right, you have a rep. Okay, wonderful. So Lisa, we can submit that and then we will come back together so that the board can share their wishes for you representing them in the assembly this year. So, great, thank you. Just a general announcement that we are excited, again, this year, to offer Parent University and that will be Saturday, November 9th, and it will begin at 9:00 a.m. Again, it will have childcare, so parents wanting to take advantage of that would then drop their kids off at Gates Elementary, which will be the site once again for our childcare. And then there will be shuttles over to East High, which is where the site of our Parent University will be held again this year. I met with the team preliminarily at the end of last week and they already have a fabulous lineup. So we are so excited and I believe later this week, we will be launching kind of the save the date and the initial registration request. But it is going to be an even better event, again, this year, armed with lots of feedback from our last, previous, our previous years from our parents. So stay tuned for more, but please mark your calendars with that date. The next three items go together. This year's tax levy, it is also that season. And so we have with us our bond advisor from Raymond James. This is Elizabeth Hennessy, who is going to share a presentation. And in her presentation, she will address the possibilities for the 2024 tax levy as well as our alternative bond levy abatement and how that will factor into our overall debt and make, give the board propose a few different options so that we could put those on display. And then you would then come back and vote at the future board meeting in November 4th. So not tonight, but then you would make a, you would use her information to move forward your recommendation, which has to be Dr. Engel on display for 20 days at least. So I'll turn it over to the very competent Liz Hennessy, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Norrell. So tonight, we're talking about options for the tax levy. And just along the lines of abatement resolutions, those are ways that you reduce the tax levy. The district has done those abatement resolutions in the past, but there are required abatement resolutions that are related to the alternate revenue bonds that the district has outstanding. Those are standard abatement resolutions. Those bonds have both the operating fund revenue pledge as well as a tax levy. So investors see them as very secure bonds, but because the operating revenues are available to pay the bonds, we abate the tax levy. So you'll see two resolutions that are standard that way. Then the resolution we're talking about tonight is the one that affects the 2024 tax levy. And so I believe you're going to be voting on that on November 4th. So let's start with the slide. We always kind of look at how 23 turned out. And once again, East Aurora 131 is the lowest tax rate in Kane County. So this includes all the unit districts that have any overlapping EAV in Kane County. And you can see among all those, you are, in fact, again, the very lowest with a tax rate that's under $4. Only district with that. So congrats on that. Apologize that these numbers are small. So here is the levy history and the proposed 24 levy with no abatements. And let me just remind you, last year, we did an abatement that kept the debt service levy at 6.5 million. Earlier this year, we also did a refunding bond issue that adjusted the 24 debt portion of the levy to that 6.5 million. So that's already in place for 24. So this abatement would be a further reduction of that tax levy. Over the last 10 years, you've abated more than $6 million from the tax levies to bring down taxes. So this year, the Kane County Clerk is estimating a 14.46% increase in the EAV, which is very large. And if you look back at your history of the EAVs, that would be the highest. Let me just remind you, last year, when we had this conversation, the Kane County Clerk was estimating for 23, an 18.2% increase in EAV, but it actually turned out to be 7.68%. So when we look at these estimates, we got to kind of think about what happened last year and what implications that has for us going forward. So also this year, we have CPI of 3.4%. So that's down from the 5% we saw last year and the year before. Okay? And so the, in red, the bottom line on estimated 24 levy, if we levy the max 3.4% we can under the tax cap. I also forgot to mention that the new property this year is 3.5 million, again, an estimate by Kane County Clerk, but that's one of the higher new property numbers we've seen. So that's always good to know the economy is growing. So with that new property and the 3.4% CPI and the estimate on EAV, without any abatement, we're looking at the, a decrease in the total tax rate of about 38 cents. The increase in revenue is 1,460. Okay, let's go to the next page. So, just to review option one, I'm going to show you three options and we'll look at the impact on the homeowner. So option one is full levy, no abatement. So you'll levy the max typically just under 5%. That easily captures the 3.4% CPI and the 3.5 million new property. In levy year 23, the district decided to increase taxes by that 4.99% and abate 9,8,720. And that resulted in close to a flat tax rate of 3.89. So the tax rate was very similar to what it was the year before. I will mention, all these numbers exclude a small number called the recapture levy. So there's a law that went into effect a couple of years ago that said, any reductions in collections that you've got from tax objections will then be re-levied the next year. So if there's a difference in the numbers, that would be it. An EAV in '24, as I mentioned, is 14.46% with 3.58 million of new property. And so this chart shows that increase in red, as we just saw, 1.46 million, 3.4% CPI, and the tax rate at 3.519%, reduction of 38 cents. So we'll look at the impact on the homeowner of this option in a minute. Option two is, let's look at an abatement, in this case, reducing the levy by 350,000. And this would be done through a debt service abatement. We're not going to impact the operating side of that levy because that has implications for you down the road. But 350,000 would come off the debt service levy, resulting in an increase of 1,110 instead of the 1,460. In this case, that takes your tax rate down even further to 3.49% or a 40-cent decrease. We did one more example where we abate 712,000. That results in a net increase of 748,302 and a decrease in the tax rate of 43 cents in this option. So next, we're going to look at the impact of these options on the homeowner. But before we do that, just going to pull up a few data points for you just because this is a little tricky, right? We've got this, the Cook Kane County Assessor saying 14% increase. The preliminary Kane County said residential value's up 15%. We have the Aurora Township Assessor saying that market values are up 11.92%, not 14.4%. We have Realtor.com saying we went from 305,000 to 315,000, which is even a lesser impact. And then we have the data point from last year where the Kane County estimate was 18.9%, but the actual increase was only 7.6%. So I just wanted to kind of give you these data points as, you know, things to consider as we look at the increase. So, impact on the home, I used, increased the home by 11.92%. So all those numbers out there, I thought the 14% is too high, especially in light of the fact that the Kane County Clerk was wrong last year by almost double. So we used, I used for this analysis, the 11.9% increase from the East Aurora Township Assessor, Aurora Township Assessor. So, option one, no abatement. We see the increased dollars paid by the home. We see the increased dollars paid by the homeowner. And this is for now a $341,000 home. Last year it was 305,000. This increase in the, with no abatements would be $60.32. Option two, if we do a $350,000 abatement, the increase goes to about half of that, $30.99. And if we do the $712,000 abatement, with these assumptions, the tax is pretty flat, just a 65 cent increase. So those are kind of the three options we wanted to show you tonight. And get a feel or a direction for how you would like to proceed as you move towards November and approval of the levy. Questions?
Does anybody? I think that we should probably, probably continue on and support our taxpayers and take option number three.
I concur.
Any other?
I agree with that. My only concern is with the vocational center, you know, the increased cost with that and the rec center. Can we afford it? Because I agree if we can, but can we afford doing that?
Yeah, so the, the rec center was all grant dollars. So we didn't, that didn't impact us at all. And this new vocational center seems to have some people lining up to participate in it. So that is definitely covered already.
Well, we're going to issue 40 million in bonds for that.
20 million cash, isn't it?
Oh, that's right.
20 million in cash, 20 million in bonds, yeah.
And 20 million and 15 million in bonds. 15 million in bonds paid off in 10 years. So we did make that bond issue lesser, but we do in fact, using fund balance towards that too, so.
But the district has maintained its rating and as far as the building itself, you know, we do have a lot of people that want to participate in that building, so the cost should be rather low. It, you know, it definitely works into the district's budget, so definitely option, option three is the one I, I would probably pick.
No, I'm okay with option three. I just want to make sure we can afford it. And then you're projecting 11.9% increase. You know, I do real estate closing because it seems like the market's slowing a bit.
I know. It's very confusing because when you look at the markets and you look at Realtor.com and Zillow and those guys, they say the same thing you're saying. But when you go to the Aurora Township Assessor or Kane County, they've got those estimates way up. So.
I don't think they published him yet though, have they?
So what are the official numbers you use? I'm sorry, but what are the official numbers you use at Realtor or the assessor or the clerk or?
We use the clerk. We have live and die by what the clerk says. So like I said, last year he said 18% on the estimate, but came in at 7.68%. So this year, he's saying 14.4% on the estimate. I scaled it back to 11.9%. So just again, this is kind of a guessing game, but I'm trying to be reasonable based on past experience and information we have today.
Well, you know, I think that, you know, real estate has still remained very hot on the east side. There are very few properties for sale and, you know, people are definitely.
There's bidding wars.
Yeah, there are definitely bidding wars. There was a property that just sold on my street. So way, they had a bidding war for it. They had like 20 people that wanted that house. So, you know, so at the end of the day, I, I still say, we have creative momentum on the east side because of our tax rates. People are looking at that. And tax rates are really important, especially, you know, when you may not have the credit rating that the bank wants you to have. So then they, they calculate your real estate taxes and everything into your mortgage payments. So I always, I feel keeping our taxes at a, at an economical rate. I think that we spur growth and we, we help our families and we help people who want to buy houses on the east side. When these taxes were super high, nobody wanted to build out in the retirement neighborhoods that never, never, you know, they have not produced any, any children, just taxes. So I, you know, I think option three continues to, to spur growth and help our families in the community. Any other questions or comments or? So it looks like option three, yeah. Okay.
Well, have those documents prepared then? The abatement resolutions for your November 4th meeting?
Clicked too far.
Thank you so much. And with that, we're going to, I'm going to pull this back up. Oh, yeah. No, you're okay. I have one more, one more item. And so we have a motion for number, for letter E, so that we can go ahead and post that for the period that it needs to be public. And that motion will, you'll reflect with and read that. That will be with number three, so. Perfect. Okay.
Get back to our need to. Okay. Can I get the presentation? Okay. Let's see. So motion to adopt the resolution estimating the 2024 tax levy.
So moved, second.
Secretary call the roll.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
One more item. Okay, our la, my last item. And that is just a very brief update. We, the Buildings and Grounds Committee has been taking care of all the logistical components for the Career and Technical Center. And tonight, because it has been some time and there's some, we've, we've moved further along and there's been some, I would say, some rather large improvements in our plans as we get ready to move to the point of going to the city council for our final approval so that we will be prepared to go out to bid and then ultimately break ground in the spring. I have Cordigan and Clark that has provided an update on the Career and Technical Center. And Steve, you're going to kind of walk through the updates. So very exciting.
I'll go through this as long as I don't have to do what Liz just presented, so. So just real quick, we have some updated renderings of potentially what the Career Technical Center could look like. These obviously are, you know, going to be changing as we, as we see the needs of the building. But we have here really the overhead view. I don't have a pointer, but in the center to the left-hand side there, you'll see a retention pond that is required for the water flow throughout the property. That, that top view also on the, right above the retention pond, you'll see a little green area. That is what we're looking at for the potential for a hydroponics garden. So we're excited about that. And that would be a rooftop garden. The, obviously the Career Technical Center, that main area is where a lot of our larger classrooms will be, as well as in, in the front side, and I'll have another screen for that, will be the classrooms. So here's just a couple of renderings of potentially what the outside would look like. This would be what I would call the back of the building or the bus entrance. So this would be along the north side of the property. And a nice open space for when we let kids off on the buses that they can flow into the building. Again, the, the north side, well, the buses are kind of parked on the right, but then, or on the left, I'm sorry. But then we also have the opportunity for really bays that would have our engineering program, welding, woods, classes, aviation. You can see a little plane there. And then to the top of, which would be the, the top portion of the building would be for our auto mechanics. Again, another view of, of what, what potentially would be down the north side of the building. Now this is more on the south side with the Indian Trail would be to the right. Another sky view. And then as we enter the building, you know, we have, it'll be a two-floor building, which will allow us to have some of the larger classrooms and the mechanicals and things will have a two-floor kind of open system. The regular classrooms will be two floors of, of basically a regular classroom. And here's a, here's that view. On this view on the left-hand side, that top left in the gray and then that pinkish rose area, that is our current ECC, along with the, the rose area is what we would renovate in the, in the ECC as a portion of the building. And then you see it's connected to the new building. And then again, the green are the general classrooms and there's, they are really on top of one another. There's a set of classrooms on the second floor, a set of classroom on the first floor. The classrooms in pink that are more equipments and manufacturing, construction trades, that is really a two-story classroom where you have an open ceiling and a more, a larger space for the two floors. And we continue to work between the architects and the building, the high school principal, Jen Mitchell, Asa Gordon, Cordigan and Clark, Dr. Norrell, we kind of have, and then a whole bunch of teachers that work in the manufacturing and all of those different areas. We've asked for their input on how, what does the wood shop look like now? What, what could we improve on to make sure that we are capturing what is going to be the best space for our students to learn? And then this is just some more renderings of, of what the flooring is going to be in each of the, of the classrooms. I mean, this is quite extensive with regards to, you know, some of the plans that we are, continue to, continue to work on to ensure that we're capturing what needs to be done. We will have, and this is again on the north side, we'll have some bays for the classrooms in order to bring equipment in and out. We can open up the bay where the kids can work outside when it's nice weather and, and be able to have that natural light as well. There's windows that would also give it some natural light in those manufacturing, in those classrooms of such. Are there any questions? Again, we're continuing to work at a springtime groundbreaking with, with the building potentially being open in the fall of '26.
Okay.
Thank you.
onward and up.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, so I had an item tonight. I wanted to bring up the discussion of the strategic plan with the board. So I think, you know, this, this weekend and things like that, since the survey came out, there's been some, you know, obviously people are pretty topsy-turvy on the survey. So I basically was looking at, maybe we should hit the pause button, go back and revamp and try to figure out, you know, what we're, what our goals are and what we really want to accomplish out of this. So I'm, I'm just looking for any feedback from the board and I'd kind of like a consensus because obviously we have meetings scheduled and, you know, we can pretty much all attest to our phone calls and our conversations when it came to the survey itself. So any comments or anybody want to throw their?
No objections.
No objections? Okay, so, all right. Well, I guess I will call, call a consensus. So I guess I'll start with Judd.
Yeah, I mean, I love the idea of the strategic plan. I think the survey that went out from the district, I much would like to see that go from our vendor. Because I got some complaints that people were nervous about answering it, so. Yeah, and I, as I mentioned in our committee Zoom call, I'd like to see the board maybe look at vision and mission. Talking louder, okay, sorry. Yeah, I'd be okay with putting a pause on it and I would like to see the survey go out from the vendor, not from the board. I think it'd be better answered, you get better responses or honest. People might be nervous to answer to this one.
Okay, all right.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to say that we all agree.
Okay, okay. I'm fine with it, obviously.
Yeah.
Mr. Schubert?
Yeah, yes. No objections.
Okay, so we will table that for the time being.
Right.
Okay. All right. Onto motion to approve the consent agenda is listed.
So moved?
Second.
Somebody second? Okay, all right. Didn't hear that. Okay, secretary call the roll.
Olivas?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
All righty. All right, on to finance and personnel. So we met this evening. So everybody will get their updates at the following board meeting. Our next board meeting is November 4th. And basically, we have a few action items here as far as press policies. So this would have been the second time that they've, that they've come. So we just, we just need a motion. So motion to approve the following resolutions to the IASB press policies. Policy 2.260, Board of Education Uniform Grievance Procedure. Policy 2.265, Board of Education Title Grievance Procedures. Policy 1C, 5100, General Personnel and Staff Development. Policy 720, Students Bullying Harassment of Students Prohibited. And Policy 7185, Students and Teen Dating Violence Prohibited.
So moved.
Any questions? Secretary call the roll.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Lache?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes. Okay. Onto curriculum and programs. Mr. Cefuentes.
Good evening, everyone. The Curriculum and Programs Committee met on Monday, September 23rd here at the Administrative Center. We did have two schools who presented their school improvement plans. The first one was Johnson Elementary, and that was presented by Principal NSM and Assistant Principal Courtney Bissell. They mentioned data or summary data for the 2023-2024 school year. And at that point, 51% of students met or exceeded in NWEA reading, while 72% of students met or exceeded in NWEA map, math. They also had an excellent attendance rate at the end of the school year with 96.28%, exceeding their goal from the previous year. And goals for the current school year are to maintain that 96% attendance rate. 80% of students at a level three in NWEA map for math will increase by one level. And also to have 60% of students will meet or exceed in their expected growth in map reading. Simmons Middle School also presented their school improvement plan, and it was presented by Principal Michelle Patterson and Assistant Principal Nelson Brandil. For the 2023-2024 summary, 58.3% of students met NWEA map, projected growth in reading, while 67.9% met NWEA map projected growth in math. And 56.4% of EL students met their reading goal. Goals for the current school year are to have 70% or more of SMS students will increase or will meet their projected growth targets as measured by NWEA map in math. And 60% or more of students will meet their projected growth rates as measured by NWEA map in reading. We also had a presentation for the Elementary Literacy Curricular Resource Pilot Presentation, and that was done by Uleilia Valdez. She mentioned that the current curriculum is being phased out by the publishers and that the curriculum and the instruction team recommended this specific one. Jalita Martinez also presented on the MTSS Behavior District Campaign. Jalita Martinez also presented on the MTSS Behavior District Campaign. The comprehensive framework is designed to support students' academic behavior and social development. And the campaign will have a three tier approach. Dr. Amy Engle also presented on the Driver's Education Simulator Waiver. And that herein already took place this evening and we're gonna, it is up for action shortly. She also mentioned that the 311 literacy partnered with D131 to participate in a international reading tournament. And students will have the ability to participate and can showcase their reading and earn prizes. Megan McCouwen Terry also presented on the Satchel Pulse SEL Memo. Satchel Pulse is a universal screener for social emotional learning, and it's a valuable tool to identify students who may be struggling with their social emotional well-being. And last on the agenda was the attendance and enrollment as of September 20th. We had 12,263 students enrolled, and the average attendance at that time was 91.57. And on to the motion. So unless anybody has any questions, we'll move on to the motion for the driver's ed. Motion to approve the driver's education waiver for behind the wheel time from the 2024, 2025 through 2028, 2029 school years.
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
All right. The next curriculum and committee program will meet on Monday, October 21st here at 6:00 PM at the Administrative Center. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Onto buildings and grounds. Mr. Schubert.
Uh, there is no report tonight. We had our meeting earlier this evening. So we'll be meeting November 4th at 6:00 PM at, right here at the Administrative Center. And the report from tonight's meeting will be shared at our next board meeting.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, workers' compensation, student discipline, and the employment, performance, compensation, and dismissal of a specific employee.
So moved. Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
Olivas?
Yes.
Cefuentes?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Arroyo?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Okay. And we will have action.
I can take.
Motion to read.
Conbeam from executive session.
So move.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Arroyo? Olivas?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resignation of a support staff employee.
So move.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Arroyo? LaShay?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Schubert, read the resolution.
Be it resolved that this Board of Education, after having considered the evidence presented by the hearing officer, hereby upholds the recommendation for expulsion of student number 716098171 of East Aurora High School effective October 8, 2024, for the remainder of the 24- 2024- 2025 school year to include summer school 2025, as well as the 2025- 2026 school year to include the summer of 2026. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the parents of said student and duly recorded in the official minutes of this Board of Education, School District 131 dated this 7th day of October 2024.
Okay. Motion to approve the resolution for student 716098171.
So move.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
Olivas?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Arroyo? Arroyo? Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll.
Arroyo? LaShay?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Schubert? Cepuentes? Olivas?
Yes.